Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the School Board of St. Lucie County Regular Meeting on June 9th of 2020. Welcome to everyone. It's good to see the audience is filling up a little bit again. And it's good to have human interaction and see faces or see eyes anyway. So we're grateful for all of you that were able to be with us today, whether it be in person or via Zoom. Welcome to all of you. If you would stand with me now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the treasure hunter pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. We'll now open the public hearing for the proposed adoption of amendments to procedures for student assignment 2019-2020. Are there any in the audience or online that wish to address this? Seeing our hearing none, Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the proposed amendments to the procedures for student assignment 2019-20 as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board members, we've received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will now close the public hearing and move to our special orders of business. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to everyone. This morning, we're going to make two presentations to you during this portion of the meeting. The first one will deal with the budget and some information on the budget, and then the second one's going to deal with the reopening of school in August. We did a survey, and I apologize if you didn't receive a copy of the presentation this morning, but we just received the information back late Friday from the parent survey. So we spent yesterday gathering, getting it all together. So you'll have a hard copy there. So Dr. Wild will go over that, and I'll have some more comments when she speaks there. But we'll first start out with Michelle, and Michelle, come on up. And Michelle's going to do a budget presentation. We'll do some Q and A at the end of that, then, with your permission, then we'll go over to the second presentation. Michelle, before you start, let me just make some general comments. So board members, you should have the hard copy in front of you, and everybody's aware of the impact. I'm not going to read the first couple of slides to you, but I know we're all aware of the impact and the decrease in spending that's impacted revenues that have come into the state, and you can see it there. One of the good news that came on Friday was at the national level that the national unemployment rate dropped from 14.7% to 13.3%. So that was a surprise for the nation. So with us reopening, you know, there could be a glimmer of hope light at the end of the tunnel. So it's really too early to say what the impact is going to be on schools next year, but I wanted Michelle to do a kind of an overview of where we are, where the revenue goes. Later on in her presentation, I think everyone saw the letter from President Galvano, State Senate President Galvano, on some of his projections, and some of it has a positive outlook as well. So we'll look at that as well and talk about that in a few moments. We're aware of the COVID-19 impact on education with our buildings, where we actually had closed our buildings, we're just now gradually reopening, and where we've gone to virtual learning, we'll talk more about that in the next presentation, and then the dollars we're spending for protective personal equipment, the dollars with virtual education, you know, focusing on next year and challenges with, which will be more of the next presentation as well. But all of that costs money for social distancing to do things with our students. So without saying anything else, we'll turn it over to Michelle, and Michelle, you're on.
All right. Good morning, everyone, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Gent. You all have the packet in front of you with the presentation. So where we're going to start is at the higher level with the state. So this little illustration shows the state receipts and how the state receives its revenue. As you can see, the largest portion comes from general revenue at 36.5%, and that's the area we're really going to focus on. This is a breakdown of the general revenue, and as you can see, sales tax represents 79%. So the collections from sales tax at the state level is the largest portion of the How is general revenue shared? Education receives 51.6% of the funds, and human services receive 30. Education would be in direct competition with human services because those are the two largest portion of general revenue. This is an illustration that shows the total general revenue throughout since July of 2019. At the bottom, I have two boxes, and I'm drawing your attention to those because those show the cumulative impact on collections based on actual receipts collected versus their budgeted. So March, you see, was higher, April, of course, was lower, and we'll talk a little bit more about that on this next slide. The, this information comes from state revenue reports. So sales tax activity for the month of March was down 25%. That's what the state is reporting. We know that. The total revenue loss, though, is 878 million from the estimate. In the letter written by Galvano that Mr. Gent will also talk about a little bit, in a little bit, he references that the sales tax activity reports are not expected until July 25th for April, followed by May's reports on July 25th. And then I won't read this entire slide, but he does go on to say that they have made some sound financial decisions that will help the impact of COVID on the state. So now we're going to talk a little bit about our funding at the district level. Majority of our funding comes from FEFP in the form of local and state funds. Our local representation is property taxes, and our state representation is in the form of FEFP, class size reduction, categoricals, and lottery. This is just an illustration of our funds per student or unweighted FTE, and this goes back to fiscal year 10. So you can just see the changes in our total funds per student that the district has received. The last five bars represent the 2021 budget that the governor hasn't been presented with yet or signed. But we did receive that information earlier in the year, so I'm using it just because we do have it even though the governor hasn't signed it yet. The next, the last four bars represent just potential impacts to our budget in the form of reductions. I'm using 10, 15, 20, and 25% as illustrations, and so we'll see the impact of those numbers, of those calculations and numbers on the next slide. So when we consider the final budget conference data and the appropriate reductions to revenue, this is what we're faced with. So I'll talk a little bit about this budget forecast so that you understand where the numbers are coming from. So the St. Lucie projected unweighted FTE, that came from the budget conference in the first column. The next numbers there are our current FTE based on fourth calc, and I'll tell you a little bit about why I use those as well. 2021 FEFP funding, that's the next line. Our net FEF, our non-FEFP revenue is stated there. Federal stimulus, that's our CARES Act funding. Then that gives you the total district revenue, and then we're going to get into some adjustments because our revenue, as everyone knows, isn't ours to keep. Some of it goes out. And so what we have here are charter school distributions. We also have to distribute a part of the CARES Act fund to charter and private schools, the McKay and Family Empowerment scholarships that also take money away from the district. And then in that first column, you're going to see a reserve for over projected FTE. The reason we do that is because when the state estimates our FTE, we don't necessarily know that we're going to get all those students. So we hold back a reserve for over projected FTE so that we're not over allocating funds that we may not get. The reason it's only in that first column is because I've reverted back to our current FTE, so there's no need to reserve for over projected FTE because I'm not using that FTE in the reductions. I'm saying we're reducing based on our current FTE. Makes sense. So now we're faced with our total district funding, and then we have required district spending. FRS is increasing from 8.47% to 10%. We have an increase in property and casualty insurance. And then the next line uses our current appropriations. And the reason that's there is because if we continue our spending, we have to know where we have to cut. So if we continue spending at our current level, that's why those numbers are showing the surplus or shortfall. And as you can see, there's a shortfall in every category. So at the bottom there, that's a little indication on our required expenditure cuts in order to break even based on our revenue estimates for reductions. And the percentages are in line with the impact that we're projecting to revenue, so we know we're somewhere, you know, we know the numbers are good. I hope that wasn't a lot, too much information. The next slide talks a little bit about our CARES Act funding. So as everyone knows, the district was allocated 10, a little over $10 million, but our actual equitable share is only about 8.3% because 2 million has to go to charters and private Now, where does St. Lucie spend its funds? This is a pie chart illustration on the proportionate share of some of our major expenses. As you can see, salaries and benefits comprises of 83% of our fund, of our spend, with purchased services being at 7% at the next highest. All other categories are under 5%. And this slide here is just a little information on our capital funds. Capital funds are, for fiscal year 20, we had about $69 million in revenue. Our major revenue sources comprise of sales tax receipts, impact fees, and local millage. And you can see the percentages there to see how much of that revenue is really impacted. So sales tax is about a quarter of that 69 million, with local millage being a little over 50%. And then we have our major expenses coming out of capital. As you can see, the largest portion of our capital funds is spent on debt service payments, with the next level being remodeling and renovation, which happens to all of our facilities, and then FFNE, sorry, that's a little backwards. FFNE, software and vehicles, is 24%. Remodeling and renovation is at 21%. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Gent to talk about the actions on the budget.
First off, in regards to the letter, and I believe the board should have, I think you received that through the School Board Association when that came out, and I know Vern sent it out as well. But this letter came from the President Galvano, it was dated the 26th, so that's just a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that he talks about is that in January, February, and March, there was 202, approximately 202 million dollars of dollars that came in, overestimated of what they thought they would have, of the money that comes into the state. And then we, you know, and then the flow kind of shut off in the next few months. So he also states that, that some of the, some of the money, particularly in, that we looked at that were below estimate in April, was affected by formal state orders that delayed payment of taxes and fees until June or later. And part of that was corporate income tax, which was about $246 million, highway safety fee, 20 million in corporate filing fees. So I don't believe those dollars have been included. So he makes a comment in here that some, this is a quote, "Some or all of these declines in April and May are expected to be recaptured in June prior to the next fiscal year, beginning July 1st, 2020." So where we are is kind of in a holding pattern. You know, we've got some strategies in place, and I'll talk about them, they're on the screen right now, but it's all contingent upon, you know, the budgetary year starts July 1st. And so the governor, we anticipate, you know, as more data comes in, you know, it's a lagging indicator because, you know, when we get a report at the end of June, that will be for the month of, of April or March, or April. It'll be the month of April and the money that was brought in. So April, we were pretty much shut down. You know, the country, the state was shut down, and then in May, you know, we're back, we're, you know, there's a gradual reopening, so revenues will come in. So it's going to be kind of a delicate dance or a balancing act there. So we're really in a holding pattern. But if you look on, what we're doing right now is we've got a hiring freeze for positions. Now, we're kind of, we look at these positions, particularly in instructional positions in the area of exceptional education. That's a critical shortage area. So we normally, you know, if somebody's there and they're good, and principal wants them, then that's going to, we're going to let that slide through. We're right now eased it a little bit for the secondary schools this past week, really starting Monday, within the areas of ELA, science, and mathematics, because those are, those are critical areas, those are the core content areas. And so we went ahead and allowed principals to hire in that area. And then at the elementary, we have the major freezes on elementary where we're only hiring right now, teachers, that would be sort of reading endorsed teachers, is that correct? Reading endorsement teachers. So we're kind of in a holding pattern. And in that area, we're also looking at all contract, any contracts that we're signing or renewing for different services in the district. We're trying to renegotiate with them, and we've been successful to kind of get some of the dollars down a little bit there. We're looking really at, looking at slowing down, particularly in the area of maintenance and repairs. If it's an absolute necessity, then we're taking care of it. If it's not, if it's something that doesn't need immediate attention right now, we're just kind of holding off. And then looking at contingency plans for each department with a 10% cut, a 20% cut, and a 25% cut. So we're really just circling the airport right now, waiting for the information to come from the governor. They've, you know, sounded an optimistic tune. The budget was set by the state legislature, then the COVID crisis hit, so we're just waiting to get numbers from them and being as conservative as we can on really just stopping any, any spending. Dr. Prince, myself, the executive directors, we review all of the requests that come from the schools, and the principals understand that we're just, it's kind of like, we're just, we're just going to be very, very conservative to roll as many dollars over as we can possibly for next year, and then hopefully within the next few weeks, next couple of months, have a clearer picture from Tallahassee on the revenue outlook. And then I mentioned briefly, we can go on to, it's on the slide now, some future impacts. I feel like I'm in trouble sitting over here in the corner. I feel like, I feel like I'm in timeout. But the, the new standards for returning to school, you know, some of our major expenses, and we're looking at the social distancing requirements, the PPE, that's, you know, to keep our, to keep ourselves safe, the cleaning, sanitizing, everything that you see there, the cost for devices, you know, trying to prepare for the unknown for the, if there is, things are going to happen in school. It's kind of like a storm with power outages. Things are going to affect different schools in different, in different ways, and we're preparing for any contingency. And the fact that I'm very confident that we're going to be able to handle that is based upon the fantastic job that the principals have done for the last nine weeks, as well as the district staff, to pretty much spend on a dime and to pivot and to go to a full virtual learning. And it's been remarkable how quick that's accomplished. There's a lot of work still to be done, but for us to have accomplished what we've accomplished in the district is really a compliment to all the folks that are sitting in the room right now, from district staff, and then our principal leaders and their teams and our teachers. And so we're very pleased with that. So as, you know, I talked about the last nine weeks of the mark, the last nine weeks of the, of the year, almost as a pilot program to prepare us for next year. And so we'll answer questions here for the budget, and then this will segue us into our next presentation on reopening of next year, some, some information from parents and some of the plans that we have in place. So we'll open it up for questions for the budget.
Board members, any questions?
I just have one. Have they talked about having a special session up in Tallahassee to come back and reevaluate the budget? And that would only make sense to me.
Yeah, right now, the only thing that I've heard is if a special session would be called, it may not be called until December after the presidential election. So that's, that's the only information I have. So we really haven't gotten anything else from the state legislature on that. You know, Vern sends us updates pretty much every night or, you know, several times a week. He monitors it closely, as well as I know you all do as well. And so, you know, right now, I haven't seen, there's, the answer would be no for the summer. But that could change.
Should be one in August. If I was governor.
Are you announcing?
No, I'm not announcing. Just saying.
If there are no other questions, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Dr. Wild, please come on up and, this is, as well, this presentation is in your packet, and this really was completed late yesterday or last night. And this is, we did a parent survey a couple of weeks ago, and Friday was the deadline for the parents to turn that survey. And so Dr. Wild is going to share the results of that survey, then we're going to talk a little bit about what the parents are saying and then what we're looking at. We stay in close contact with neighboring counties as well as the superintendent association. You know, we have, we have calls to talk about what everyone's doing. So we're pretty much all in the same boat. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Wild and give presentation, and then we'll answer questions in this area as well.
Okay, good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Gent. Happy to see you all in the same room again. It's wonderful. Yes, this is just a quick update on our return to school planning process that we are currently undergoing, and I know I spoke to you last time. But since then, we continue to talk to other districts, meet with small groups of principals, discussing it with our CTA, CU, ESAL group, and others. So we did this short survey, which was really designed to just get a pulse of what people are currently thinking, and we know that, that things are changing rapidly, and we will have to continue to find out where our parents are in terms of their mindsets. So this survey went out from June 1st through June 5th, and 8,572 parents did respond. That represents more children than that because we only required one survey per parent. So we did ask them what grade levels their children are in, and that's the breakdown of students represented, not the number of students, but the breakdown of what grade levels they were in, to give you an idea of what the parents were thinking based on age. The two main questions are on the screen above you or next to you. We would like to know what your current preference would be for your children for the return to the school in fall. Please check which option you would select at this time, and with the results, we'll go over what the options were. And then asking deeper, if we were to offer a blended hybrid type option that includes some virtual schooling and some face-to-face, which of two schedules would you prefer? In the survey itself, the first question asked them to identify if they had to choose right now, what option would they prefer? And you'll see 44% said they would want a traditional, everybody goes back to school. So we will be prepared to do that. 37% selected that they would consider a blended option that would be half virtual, half face-to-face. That allows for half of the students in a school to come back on any given day and for class sizes to essentially be cut in half. So that was the next selected item at 37%. And then those people that would still select full-time virtual was 19%. And the people already enrolled in Mosaic did not answer the survey, so that appears to be 19% people, new people that would seek virtual. I do want to say that when we get to our next phase of surveys, they'll be provided more specifics because the virtual would look different than it did during the fourth quarter. It would look closer to what Mosaic and St. Lucie Virtual do now, with clear expectations for the students and the parents and what their role is. And so we would make sure that when people answer, they know exactly what they are selecting. We also broke it down so you could see the preferences by school type. So you can see that the traditional, everybody go back to school, the highest percentage that selected that were in our elementary schools at 49%, and the lowest was in our high schools at 41%. You'll see the virtual stayed pretty consistent from 17 to 20 across school types, and the blended model ranged from 33 to 41, depending on school type. And then we asked them if we created this blended model, would you prefer alternating days, coming to school every other day and staying home every other day? And 29% selected that option. 14% selected alternating weeks, one week on, one week off. And 26% selected either option. And so when you look at that, you'll see the alternating days was the highest selection, and when you combine it with those that wanted either option, even higher. And then 31% didn't like the blended. And we did the same thing with breaking down by school type, so you can see pretty consistent across levels, and 36% being the highest for neither option. The either option is quite consistent across, and actually, there's not a lot of differences across school types with this question.
Hold on, I got a question. Going back to that other slide, did that include the 20% that already opted out?
That, yes, everybody answered this.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you skipped that question.
Yes. Good question. So looking at our potential return to school plans, like Mr. Gent covered, everything is, is currently on the table based on what our needs will be when school starts. We are pulling a team of content experts to work with our curriculum and talent development folks all summer to build out Canvas. So if there's intermittent closures, we're ready to go full virtual, blended, we're going to build it out with that in mind. Also, our teachers are well-versed in how to use Canvas now, and many of them are excited to be using it in their regular classrooms next year for enhancing instruction with technology. Right now, we are looking at students returning face-to-face at the elementary level, and if we go that route, it would be for several reasons. One is related to academics, and that is the fact that those are the years when students are learning the most critical building blocks in their learning in terms of literacy and mathematics. Also, we hear a lot about the parents' needs to have their children in a safe place during the day so that parents can go back to work. So there's the parent need and the economic impact of that. And the school class sizes are smaller to begin with than in the secondary grades, so traditional face-to-face seems more feasible at the elementary level at this time. For parents who are requesting full-time virtual, they will get very specific expectations, as I said. They will also be asked if they are thinking this is their long-term decision for the entire school year or short term, because the option that we give them could look different. Short term, it could be teachers at the school that they currently go to, where we would create sections using Canvas, and they would be full-time virtual until such time that we would bring them back. So we would constantly be assessing, are you ready to come back now? And blend them right back in. Whereas with Mosaic and St. Lucie Virtual, there are different expectations, different requirements, and it works better if the person is committed to at least a semester, if not a full year, for that option. So we are poised to do both of those options. And then based on data for elementary, if we did have a full return to school, we could also do a blended option for parents who are not ready to return their children full-time but whose children are less successful in virtual and need face-to-face small group instruction. So that blended option could be accomplished by having the virtual, having the teachers' schedule flexed, having the children do their virtual schooling during the day, and then have them come to sites after hours, whether it be their own site or a high school that gets out earlier. We have many options where we could accomplish that type of flexibility. And then for secondary, we are looking at the alternating day, week type schedules, the hybrid blended schedules, talking to other districts. And after exploring all of those, another district shared that they were looking at a slightly different hybrid of secondary students coming two days in, three days virtual. So two days face-to-face, for example, the student might physically go to school Monday and Tuesday, and then do their virtual Wednesday through Friday, or do their virtual Monday through Wednesday and come to school Thursday and Friday. With that, the teachers would be teaching four days a week face-to-face, and on Wednesdays, that would be their day to monitor the virtual. And on Wednesdays, that would be their day to monitor the virtual, progress monitoring for virtual and their planning, their faculty meetings. And they could also do small group face-to-face targeted during that day. So, we do, we have talked to a district looking at that model. And also, we would be looking very closely at our special populations and our ESE students, our self-contained classes that are very small but the students have more intensive needs. They could potentially, on this type of schedule, still come to school five days a week to meet their needs. Same thing, as I said before, parents requesting full-time virtual would still have that option. The blended in this model for secondary is school-wide. It's not those exceptional cases. So, this is just a summary slide of those options that I just talked about with traditional full-time schedule for elementary, a blended hybrid schedule for secondary, and then the customizing options for families with special needs. And with any customized schedules, like I said, that would be reevaluated a minimum of quarterly about trying to get students back to school. We are going to do another survey, maybe multiple surveys. We're going to continue to work with groups, representative groups, principals. I have another one scheduled today. And I've got the union scheduled for next week. We are going to continue to gather feedback and monitor what other districts are doing before final decisions are made.
Also, before opening up for questions, Dr. Prince has a committee as well. It's made up of teachers, it's made up of principals, and I think support staff as well. And so, they meet as well. And because the one thing we can't forget, no matter what happens, is we've got to maintain and we've got to drill it. And we've done a good job with that. You know, really is about the social distancing, the washing of hands, the stay-home when you're sick, those simple concepts that first came out when this crisis started. You know, that's got to be forefront, the student safety. So, we're looking at, how do you do that? How do you socially distance? It's impossible to do it on a school bus, okay? Unless we get 500 new buses. So, some of those ideas where you hear different groups say, well, just get more drivers and get more buses, you can't do that. It's fiscally impossible to do and so, it's a non-starter. So, you look at, in our polling of parents, how many are capable of driving their students to school and dropping them off and picking them up, which could decrease, can't talk, decrease size, bus size? You know, what will the schools look like? What will the, and this is where Dr. Prince is, what is, each school is unique. They have their own footprint, their own geographic of what that school looks like, the architecture of the school. Where would be the entry points? Because we have limited entry points right now, single points of entry. Do all students get a temperature check like we've done today, like we're doing in our schools right now? And then, guidelines in the school within the clinic itself. What does class change look like? What does lunch look like? What does after-school activities look like? All of these, everything that goes on in a school is what Dr. Prince's committee is looking at because it will look different for different schools. But under the umbrella of school safety of, you know, face mask, you know, who's wearing the face mask, who's, you know, are there breaks for the little guys every hour, washing hands, sanitizers, terraces? I sent him, you know, I sent him every day to himself and the maintenance facility staff, you know, the hand washing and the different equipment that's out there and what's coming down the, you know, what's the latest thing coming down the pike as far as student safety goes. So, all of these are everything that we're discussing as a group to make sure that we can make the best recommendation as to what school would look like in August with school, student, and staff safety first and foremost. When I see more openings in the summer, that's okay by me because I think it's important that we've got to see, you know, what's happening out there. You know, and we work closely with the Health Department, with Clint and his team. We work with them on ideas and on thoughts to make sure that what we're looking at adheres to what their recommendations are. And so, it's a very, very tough process to do because you just can't be perfect in every area. But what you can do is to make sure that you, that there's certain things that we focus in on. We'll continue to contact parents because we're going to have to land this in a month when we have our next board meeting. We've got to bring it in for a landing and let parents know this is what school will look like. We've got to make it clear to the parents that virtual learning and how it looked the last nine weeks, it wasn't that difficult in all honesty, okay? We erred on the side of the child. And so, we've lost some academic time there and so, we've got to regain that. We've got to worry, focus on the social, emotional needs of the children that are coming back in the school as well as the academic piece. And those go hand in hand. So, our team, we're working on this with our committees out there. And for each individual school, again, we'll poll parents to try to let, to try to get their input as we've done here. You can see almost 50 or 40%, you know, at the elementary level wants their children in school full-time. And we understand that. We understand, you know, all of us have had examples of that, of, or most of us. Troy, you don't have grandchildren yet, correct? You know, of how to...
Not that I'm aware of. Hope not.
Of, you know, of how difficult it was. Our teachers have children, how challenging it was for them to teach online virtually and to take care of their own needs. Our principals, those of us that have grandchildren and we think, quote, "We've got it all together." And we're still there with those kids, you know, doing their lessons and they're struggling through, not all the time struggling, we may have struggled more than they did, you know. But the fact that we did the job that we've done was a remarkable, phenomenal job. And so, I'm very encouraged by that and very confident that whatever plan of action we have for the fall, it's going to be a great plan, it's going to be a safe plan, and we're going to be able to adjust. We have to be able to adjust. You have to have a problem-solving mechanism in place, whatever the challenges are that pop up. Because I think Dr. Prince said this, it's going to be like a hurricane and weather outages that go here and there. Certain schools could be affected in certain ways because of this or because of that. And then, how quickly we can adapt as a school district. So, close out with that and open this up for questions from the board.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Mills?
Dr. Wild, have the committees discussed recess? You know, the time when children need to socialize, how that would look like?
Yes, actually, Mr. Jent referred to Dr. Prince's committee. That is a bigger, broader committee and the academic scheduling component of it is a subcommittee of that or a subset of work. And it's all interrelated. So, they have, Dr. Prince has assigned various district leaders to facilitate different topics with different groups and what recess looks like, what physical education looks like. We are discussing all of those options right now. And also, the cleaning aspect that goes along with that, the custodial needs and that type of thing.
And I basically asked that question, it's like a personal question because we're opening up a summer program. So, I wanted to know what was some of the ideas and would like to maybe speak with Dr. Prince later, but of how that should look.
Yes, and as you know, elementary recess became a requirement a couple of years ago and the DOE has not addressed how they're going to waive those requirements or alter those requirements, but I'm sure it's on their list as well.
This is an incredible task force because I've been reading and watching and myself involved in opening for pre-K and what the CDC expects. And some of the things that we're told are not what other, you know, the DCF says one thing, CDC says one thing. And some of these are conflicting in some cases, but I think it's just common sense. But I too, as Mr. Jent said, have a situation with my own family, that I have teachers in my own family. And they're trying to figure out what will happen if they're only teaching three days a week or five, however it works out. So, it is, it's going to take a huge process to find out where we need to be. And my concern, of course, is also the socioeconomic, how do parents work three days a week and still make a living with elementary-aged children? So, I like the fact that you've looked at elementary and middle and high school in different ways because high school students are much more proficient as far as doing online lessons and possibly don't need as much help. When I look at kindergarten children, they really, this is new, everything is new. But I, and then the busing, how do we social distance unless we give masks to all the kids and the bus driver and so forth? But you all have really labored over this and I know we all have and I so much appreciate it because we have to get it right. And very possibly, there could be a second wave and we have to look at that too. So, it's not just about child safety, it's about our staff, our teachers. Some of our teachers have pre-existing conditions and are we putting them in a situation that they're not safe? So, that is, you know, bus drivers, teachers, cafeteria, all our staff. But I'm so appreciative of the work you have done because this is heavy lifting. Thank you.
Thank you. In regard to the teachers and them wondering what it would look like, we are also, as we're building out the Canvas and doing the curriculum component, we're building out a massive professional development plan as well. Because when we did have to make that transition, we had to teach everyone how to use the tools and become proficient with the technology. And now, we're going to be moving that deeper in how to be successful in a blended model or a full virtual model with, you know, teaching strategies and getting deeper in that training. It's part of our plan.
Madam Chair, Ms. Hensley?
Knowing that we impact probably 150,000 people a day or more, anything we do impacts the entire community and that means all those agencies that are our partners. So, when the decision is made, we need to make sure that we have that community conversation so the people that need to pivot in what they do have the opportunity to do that. We may need to have a conversation with a broad scope of funders to be more collaborative in how we're going to meet the increased needs for not just after-school but during the day potentially. As well as we're working with the Chamber to make sure that the small businesses have a voice because they're the ones that employ most of the people. So, anyhow, we have the ability to do that. It's going to be very timely to make sure something is ready to go out as soon as the decision is made. And then, to have the willingness to be somewhat flexible with some of our traditional partners.
Thank you, Mrs. Hensley. And you are right, I presented to the Roundtable Group on Friday. Mr. Jent sits on that group. The topic was actually summer school, but at the end, I did mention that we are working on our return to school plan and we would continue to communicate details of that. And they were very interested and Chamber was in attendance as well.
Dr. Wild, with parents, I know it has had to be a real challenge within having, as Mr. Jent said, grandchildren myself, who I became a teacher for during this time. I learned some things, how important parents are in this process.
Yes.
And, you know, I have one grandson who made the principal honor roll, but not until I got involved, you know? So, when we start, first started with the virtual program, he was just gone, you know, he was third grader going into the fourth, he was just gone, like he just knew it all. And it was horrifying what the teacher was getting. And I thought he knew because he told me he knew. So, parents are, you know, the challenge has really been great for all of us and as a community, I'm very proud of what we've all done. But I'm really concerned about those children who parents may cannot help them or will not help them. And I want to know, have we done any type of survey where it, what has it come back in regards to how well the students are doing overall, especially those students that may have those challenges? Because my grandson would have got straight, almost straight A's. He ended up being a principal honor roll simply because of parent involvement. So, what's going on out there? Do you know more that you can share with us?
Yes, there's a lot in that question. And you're absolutely right with the parents' ability to help. I know with our hotline, the talent development folks, once we got past the initial technology challenges, they did spend most of their time walking parents and grandparents through processes, how to help your child, how to know what they're doing. You know, we eventually got progress reports up and running during the fourth quarter. Those are all the things that I'm saying would be perfected with the fall, with time to get them rolling. In true virtual with our, we have a lot of success with our virtual program, A-School, a big portion of that is the training of the parents. They are called learning coaches, they have formal responsibility. That wasn't feasible in this type of emergency situation. Those people selected to go virtual, this community didn't in this particular case. But you are right, we did do a previous survey about, did you, with lots of questions on it and did your, did you know how to find out how your child was doing? And that answer was quite favorable, that was very high. We were pleasantly pleased with that one. We also have polled our teachers on what their observations are. We're using all of those lessons in this planning process now. That's part of what our committee does, is look at all that data. And then, right now, grades are being processed to get those report cards out. And you all changed our board policy for an emergency grading policy, which has also helped our students. So, if they didn't perform as well during fourth quarter, their academic transcript did not get hurt by that. And we're in the process of doing that now. But we did have teachers enter accurate fourth-quarter grades so that we can look at that, how many children fell academically and would have suffered in terms of grades had we not made that change. So, we're in the process of evaluating that data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The biggest, the big, next to safety is the human connection. And many of the children haven't had that human connection with that teacher nor that teacher with them. It's one thing to do it online, but there's no substitute for in-person. And so, and those are the parents sometimes we don't hear from in our survey, even though we've got, you know, over 11,000 students that responded. We still have another group that we haven't heard from. And we did, you know, calls out to parents to encourage them because we do want to hear from them and the community as we're formulating a plan. And sometimes, you know, it's the same, if this had never happened, it's still hard sometimes to get parents into the school building for whatever reason. And so, we're doing everything we can to act, you know, to communicate with everyone as to what we're doing, asking for the input. We do have the survey from the teachers. We're going to be reviewing that tomorrow with our principals. We have a principal meeting, two sessions in this room, half and half. Elementary will be in the morning and the secondary will be in the afternoon. And we'll be going through that. It's called Panorama, it's a survey and it shows the teachers. We hear from what the teachers are thinking and what do we need. So, we're getting input from everybody as we're making all of these decisions. And again, you know, we're going to land this here and do the best job that we can. But I'm very confident that we're going to be successful in what we're doing and we're able to adapt and we're able to, you know, we're able to move and to adjust quickly if we need to. I wanted Dr. Wild also, because she mentioned summer school, if she could just take a second and explain to you what we are doing right now with summer school.
Okay, yes, a summer school update. We have completed for our elementary summer Caterpillar Camp, we have completed all the hiring of the teachers as of yesterday. All the students have been identified. If any school has open seats, they've been encouraged to still find students that would participate. As you know, in elementary for that camp, we are targeting our students that may not have been successful even prior to fourth quarter and then had existing challenges during fourth quarter. It is a phenomenal program. They, the teachers have begun their training on the math curriculum, literacy training will come next. The materials are being delivered yesterday and today to schools. And beginning tomorrow and the 11th, the schools have set up their schedules for distributing the laptops. Every student will receive a laptop if they don't already have one of our laptops. And they will receive their literacy and their math workbooks and additional supplementary materials. And school starts on the 15th. We also have the Spark packets ready to go out that is also for our elementary students. That is four weeks' worth of lessons that will be mailed to their houses due to a partnership with Children's Services Council and the Education Foundation. So, those will be going out. In our secondary schools, our students that were in credit recovery or need credit recovery are in it now with a primary focus on grade eight and grade 12, although we have more than 12th graders in it for high school. And then, we also have a neglected and delinquent virtual summer school that is beginning as well as English Language Learners Boot Camp. And many materials were sent to their homes as well to help them and their parents with summer slide. With that said, I also wanted to mention that we have met with many, many community groups on this, including Mrs. Holly's Academic Success Network, which is a part of the Roundtable, presented to the Roundtable in its entirety. And we have also met with Children's Services Council multiple times along with Teresa Bishop and Boys and Girls Club and all of our community agencies to come up with a plan that will make sure that as many children as possible are touched by this, by the summer curriculum that we have out there. We also still have the summer slide. Our teachers did send out summer, a notification of what students should do during the summer and which of those programs to access for which subjects, areas by grade level. And our com- subjects areas by grade level. And our community agencies have really stepped it up, and they are working on plans during their academic time to use our curriculum. Whether they're using our Caterpillar lessons that are pre-recorded, or using our Spark packets, they are very much on board and understanding that. And we are doing a curriculum training with those groups. Kimberly J. is doing that training. That's being coordinated. The date's being set up right now. So they'll know how to use them. They want to train whoever is supervising the children on how to use these materials appropriately. They were specifically designed for parents to be able to use. So they don't need to be certified teachers, but we do want them to understand how to work with the children. So we're really excited about this expansion of our reach this summer. And also, the Children's Services Council is giving an incentive to agencies that open up for Saturday school. So they are going to work with us on what their Saturday schedule might look like, based on the makeup of their students, of the children that they are serving. So we are right on track, and summer school has started.
So you mentioned training for the different people to be able to use our curriculum. Do you have a date for that?
No. Teresa Bishop is getting back to us with a selection of dates to do that. And I just emailed her before I came down here to see if she had those set yet. And I know you have a specific interest. I can make sure that you have that information as well. We are trying to also extend that to local churches, because some churches have communicated with us that they may have five students that come by every day. How can we help? So we're reaching out to them as well.
Madam Chair, another question. The Calipula Camp. Now, is that a virtual camp?
It is. Yes, that is virtual. It is beginning June 15th through July 9th. But it is robust. The materials are fantastic. They have pre-recorded lessons, so all students get the same lesson. But then they also have an online virtual teacher in very small groups. So they'll get targeted small group instruction, one-on-one tutoring throughout that process. And we gave every student a computer, so no sharing.
Any other questions or comments?
What about the alternative schools? Is there a different plan? And how is that working?
So the alternative schools, there is a different plan, but they're also eligible for the regular plan. So let me clarify. Like, performance-based students, they're part of the credit recovery. Dale Cassons are part of the credit recovery, if that's what they need. But we also have a very specific summer school for alternative students most in need, and that's funded through our Neglected and Delinquent Funds. And it is still virtual, but those teachers, all of the teachers that did it last year have returned, because they have a special affinity for that student body. And so that begins, it's the same timeframe, but it is a little bit different, because it is specifically designed for their needs. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Superintendent, that concludes our special orders?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then we'll move on, and thank you, all involved with that at Yeoman's Lift to get all of these things done in such a short amount of time. So you have our continuing deep admiration for all your accomplishing for our students and team. We'll move on to our reports then. I know Mr. Freeland was going to join us. I don't know if it's here or virtually. There he is. Welcome.
Superintendent Gent. First thing I want to speak about this morning, and really the only thing I want to speak about, is as we come to the end of the nine weeks, the incredible work that really our teachers, our support staff, everyone involved in what happened over those last nine weeks did. It was, we've used this metaphor before, but we were building the bike as we were riding it. And it was really an adventure. And part of the reason I feel that we were successful in that is because we did it as a team. We were part of the decision-making easel I'm speaking about. So not only did we help build that bike while we were riding it, we were able to sell that bike. We were able to be sure that our members' concerns were addressed at the ground floor, so to speak. As we move forward, and I sat here listening to the special orders and potential plans, I need to remind maybe everyone that in the past, we have, our union has always been a part of that decision-making, the committees that make those decisions. That allows us to be able to explain why building a bike with square wheels is a problem before it's built, rather than having an argument after the fact about the square wheels. I have to say that I'm also very proud, or have been in the past, when I meet with my colleagues, and we meet, just like I'm sure the school board meets with their colleagues, to discuss many things, but including bargaining. And one of the things that was pushed very hard this last time around was bargaining language, to be sure that the unions are included in all of the district's committees. I was very proud to be able to say, we don't have to do that. We've always been a part of those committees. In 2007, we had to cut over 100 positions and transfer 100 employees. Although it was difficult, we were able to do that in an orderly manner, because we were part of that group. We were at the table when those decisions were being made. So I'm hopefully understandably concerned when your, what I like to consider intimate partners with the district, is sitting on the outside looking in at committees doing their work. And I'm going to have to put my union hat on for just a second, and perhaps remind everybody that these plans that are being formulated impact health and safety and working conditions, and are really subject to negotiation. I would rather not negotiate. I'd rather be part of the solution, rather than potentially being a part of the problem. So it's really just a reminder that we, as we've done in the past, would hope to be invited to sit on those committees from the get-go. And it's great that teachers are included, but teachers don't represent the bargaining units. I know that we're having a meeting next week to have some input. And I really do appreciate that, but input's not quite the same as being a part of those committees. So, I mean, really, that's all I want to say. We've been very successful so far, so I don't want to sound totally negative. But we have been very successful getting through these nine weeks together. I just want to be sure that that continues going forward. And that's my report for today, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland, for joining us today. CWA report. I see Ms. Vickers with us. Well, it's nice to have you with us today. We will then move to our consent agenda. Board members, we have the agenda before us. I would entertain a motion to accept it as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Board members, are there any items that you wish to remove for discussion or separate vote? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, the recommendation for approval.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second in there. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will then move to our reports. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two administrative positions, principal positions, that I want to, and the board just approved. So thank you. And would like to recognize both ladies, and have them say a couple of words. So we're going to first reach out to Latricia Stubbs, who will be the interim principal at CA Moore. We were flawless with, there we go.
Good morning.
The floor is yours.
To the esteemed board, Madam Chair, and Mr. Gent, I would like to say thank you for this wonderful opportunity to be able to represent the students, the community, the faculty and staff of Chester A. Moore Elementary. I am beyond excited. And I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me to begin my journey, my, further my journey, excuse me, into leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stubbs. And in the building, we have Kelly Niagara, who will be the new principal at Weatherby Elementary School. Kelly.
Good morning, Madam Chair, distinguished board members, and Superintendent Gent. I am honored to stand before you as the new principal of Weatherby Elementary School. I am grateful for the opportunity Mr. Gent, his district leadership team, and this board have entrusted me with. I would also like to take this opportunity to wish the current principal, Kimberly Kane, well in her retirement later this year. I am fortunate to have worked with so many great school leaders in my career. Bernadette Floyd gave me an opportunity to join St. Lucie County Schools as a counselor at St. Lucie Elementary. John Lynch gave me the opportunity to broaden my horizons and work as a senior counselor at Westwood High School. And Nicole Ortega and Bree Lamb have both taught me so much of we've served the Windmill Point community over the last four years. I want to thank both of them for their tremendous support. I truly believe that I would not be the leader I am today had it not been for their guidance, encouragement, and their friendship. As important, I am fortunate to have worked with hundreds of outstanding world-class educators in St. Lucie County. We have overcome many challenges and shared many successes together. I think I've learned far more from them than they could ever realize, and I'm grateful for their support, their strength, and their dedication to serving our students. I cannot leave out my family, who wish I could be here this morning. My husband, Paul, and my children, Isaiah, Cameron, and Cassidy, have all been so supportive of my career and encouraged me on as I pursued my master's and doctoral programs. And finally, to my new Mariner family, I am so excited to be a part of this team. I promise to always lead with a spirit of service and support to you, our children, and our families. I can't wait to get to know all of you, and just really cannot wait to get started. Thank you.
And I think, Kelly, you just completed your doctorate program, or you're?
Yes.
All right. So that deserves, for both candidates, let's say. And then the other administrative move is, we're going to bring on an administrator on assignment, Bridget Hargine, from Southern Oaks Middle School, is going to come in here and work with us on our COVID response and what we're doing, and part of the presentation you heard today. And so she just started on Monday. She's working closely with Bill Tomlinson, with Terrence, and with the academic team as well. Because we needed somebody, really, we call her the COVID queen. That's a positive term, for her to really synthesize our response and what we're doing in all of the areas. And because our staff's been working very, very hard, and we did need additional support and help in that area. So we welcome Bridget as well. A few other announcements, and then a statement that I want to make. Our graduations, our virtual graduations are complete, and they went very, very well. I want to commend our media services, Lydia and her team, and Craig, who's back there in the back room, that they did a fantastic job with that. And we've gotten a lot of positive responses from that. We will do our in-person graduations beginning June 30th. And I'm glad we didn't do it last week, because we'd have been postponed. But it will be part of the elements, and we are looking forward to that as well, to give the students to bring closure, to say goodbye to each other. And so we'll keep the board updated on that as we begin that process. We talked about summer school. I just wanted to mention our summer feeding sites, that we have them on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's on the webpage of where they are. We also went to some community locations as well. So if anyone's looking, it's between 11:00 and 1:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That the school's listed at the locations that are listed as well. And then I wanted to give a shout out to Palm Point. They placed first in the Florida Breakfast Challenge. The K, the school, it was an award by the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and the Dairy Council of Florida, and No Hungry Florida. And their efforts to increase school breakfast participation was successful to ensure the students have access to the nutrition needed during the classroom and beyond. And they're going to receive $1,000. In closing, I just wanted to make a comment about what's happening right now in our nation, particularly under, you know, today will be the funeral of George Floyd, who was horrifically and violently murdered, which is really a tragic example of the racism and injustice that still exist in our country. And I think it's important for us to focus on the issues surrounding this national tragedy. I've been touched by listening to some of my black friends, folks that I've known for many, many years, as well as some colleagues that I don't know that well. One was Dr. Fanoi, the superintendent of Palm Beach County right now, and Dr. Greg Howe, who is the president of Broward Community College. And I guess one thing that really struck me was that when they tell of their own personal experiences, they talked about the fear, the fear for themselves, the fear for their children. Could they be the next victim? And that really struck home. You know, to live in fear in this country right now really must be condemned by everyone. As a district, we've got to continually examine our practices and policies to ensure the success of every child every day. That can't be something that's in our mission statement or on a webpage. That's something that we have to live every day, and to graduate our children equipped with skills to be successful when they leave. I think just as important is that each of us, myself, we've got to examine our own hearts, our beliefs, and do our part to peacefully fight injustice and racism, and to seek real and lasting justice, and not to seek revenge. There's a minister in West Palm Beach, Reverend Dr. JR Thicke, who said, quote, "Only when there's a transformation of our hearts and minds can there be change," end of quotes. So my prayer really is for wisdom and for unity. And I've said before that I can't change anybody, but I can influence them by trying to change myself. So that's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And while we are still acting under a public health emergency, let me read, please, a motion into the record. "To confirm, approve, and ratify all of the superintendent's actions taken during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the period covered by his report, and authorizing the superintendent's continuation of such actions for so long as the governor's emergency declaration remains in effect." Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And again, Mr. Superintendent, our deep appreciation for all of your work during this time. It's just invaluable, and we are blessed to have you here.
Well, it's those guys right there. Are they still awake?
Wow.
They can hide behind that mask. I don't know.
Can't tell whether they're smiling at you, or whether they're making a face at you.
They're smiling. They're smiling.
Mr. Harrell, a report?
No, I, thank you.
Thank you for being here today. And we'll move then to our school board member reports. And Ms. Hensley, I'll begin with you today.
Through the changes that we're going through, we found that the hands cleaning our pediatric dental is not able to see our kids, because he's going to schools and preschools. So we're trying to craft a way for him to be able to continue what he does as move the needle significantly for children. And the funding is coming from CSC and from United Way. We're keeping that funding stable. While we're trying to figure out how we're going to help him maneuver, have him to actually do his job, to see the kids that he needs. So that's one thing. Also, Children's Services Council, Mr. Gent is also on that. Mr. Boyle and I are in, I would say, constant contact, but several times a week, about making sure that we, if need be, reprioritize our funding to meet the new needs. And looking at the future, knowing that this year is pretty good, as far as money coming in, knowing next year very likely will be a plateau, if not a dip, and being able to make sure that whatever decisions we make actually can keep our agencies doing what they do for children for the next several years. We've been through this before. We know how to do it. We don't like to do it, but we do know how to do it. And we're trying to figure out how to do it without as little pain as possible, to make sure that we can keep the future positive for our kids, because they need us more now than they probably ever have.
Ms. Henson?
I just want to thank Mr. Gent. And Dr. Prince has said it's kind of like we're in a hurricane. And I agree with that, because the unknown, but this is certainly uncharted territory. And the team in this room have done phenomenal things. And you, we just need to be really thankful, because these are things that we can't just open a book and read and ask other counties, or ask other people, even the Health Department. These are just so many unknowns. And these are actually life and death decisions that we are making. are making. But I really want to thank this team and what you've done because I don't think we see all the intricate pieces that you look at, and then you bring them to us in a well-developed plan and give us that opportunity to be good board members. And I appreciate that. I wanted to speak a little bit along with what Mr. Jen said. As a preschool director, working with children one through five, and I have a variety. I have a funny little situation that happened this year. I had a little boy from China and a little girl who was from Mexico, and she kept speaking Spanish to him, and he kept speaking Chinese to her, and they were best friends. And neither one knew what the other one was saying, but it was so precious to me. And it reminded me that children are not born with prejudice. It is a learned situation and intent, and it can be generational. Having grown up in Fort Pierce, having grown up in the South, I lived through segregation. I lived through integration. And this is one reason why I am so strongly opposed to a situation where we are not busing children, when we're health-wise able to bus children from an area that's more impoverished to an area that is less impoverished, because we slip back into those old evil, I don't know, just remnants of the Confederacy, basically. And it's very offensive to me. But I have the joy of watching young children interact with each other. And the way the Methodist churches, they want every preschool, which ours is a Methodist center, to look like National Geographic. And I am blessed that my center looks like children from all over the world. And it concerns me because when my children leave VPK and go away into the school system, they all of a sudden find out that they're different. They find out that they're special need. They find out that they speak a different language and maybe are looked at differently, or their skin color is a different color. And so I have the privilege to shelter them and keep them safe from the prejudice and the hate and the unkindness and all the world of what we can be. Could we just be kind? Could we just be kind to one another and not judge each other by things that we cannot change? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. Dr. Mills?
These two are going to make me cry in a minute. I want to say thank you, first of all, to our staff and the work that you have put in to ensure the best education that we can actually give our children at this time. I want to also thank Mr. Jen for your comments because there are many leaders right here in St. Lucie County that have not opened up their mouths and have said and spoken truth. And that tells us something about our superintendent. And none of us are perfect, but we all have a ways to go, each and every one of us. And as you said, Mr. Jen, words only are useless. We have got to be about starting within ourselves. And what is it that we can do personally to make a difference and make a change and grow from where we are when it comes to humanity? You know, they want to do reform with the police department, and yes, reform is needed. But reform is needed throughout this entire community. Reform is needed throughout this entire country in all different types of organizations. And all we can do is grow from this. I want to also tell our young people out there that I stand with you. I'm very grateful for the young people that have marched and rallied peacefully and have been determined to stand up for justice and equality. And young people, you can make a change. Don't ever think that this cannot change for the better. You continue to stand for what is right, and you will encourage the rest of us to be better people. I am an activist at heart. I am an advocate at heart for this community. I have been so for 35 years. And so if you see me out there with them, just pray for Dr. Mills, because I'm one that I don't like to do a lot of talking, but I like to see action. I was privileged to speak at a rally, and I get very passionate about righteousness and justice and equality. So just keep me in your prayers because I don't mind standing up and speaking out. But I really appreciate what you said, Mr. Jen, and what you said, Ms. Hilsen, because many leaders, we don't say anything. And we need to stop that. And we need to all together encourage the young people to protest peacefully, not be silent, but there's a way to go about doing things and not be destructive. And so sometimes we have to join with them to encourage them to do that. So I just want to thank everyone for all with this Corona that we've been, virus that we've been up under, and now with this protesting and so forth. We could do this. We can be better, and we can do better. And here in this district, I am proud to be part of the St. Lucie County School District because we do have some people that really and truly care. And as I look out there at our administrators, I see several of you that go the extra mile to do what's right, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say, I've been on the board for 12 years, 12-plus years. And out of the 12-plus years, I think we've only had five normal years of education. Put that in perspective. We had hurricanes. We've had controversies of sex ed, changing this curriculum, busing. We haven't had our offices. We finally get together, and we're here. Now we're not here. You know, we're coming, we're going. And yet, I still feel that this is probably one of the best years that has drawn us together as a family, as a St. Lucie County family, bringing us together. And I want to thank you. It's going to get really interesting. And let me tell you, forecast the next 45 days, it's going to get rough because we don't know what HR is going to look like and how we're going to move people in and out, student assignment, you know. But God has been gracious to us. We have some special people in this room, and I want to thank you. Thank you for the curriculum department, the transportation department. Thank you to our superintendent. You know, I make fun of him almost every other day, and he gets pictures. And, you know what I'm talking about. And we're seeing movement. And I want to thank you sincerely. You know, I want to thank our community, sharing their voices, calling their elected officials, and talking to us. I want to thank our law enforcement for the ability to listen to our community. And there is going to be changes. There's going to be changes from the workforce. So it's going to be interesting in the next couple of months. And obviously, from this board, you've heard our hearts, and we're very grateful for what you do. And not just the manner and what you do, but how you do it with compassion and care. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. And I too must add my comments, along with my fellow board members, that these times are trying, but they can be, and they will be unifying. And we're seeing that come about. When I listen to the young people, I do a lot of work through Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the youth that we serve there. And just listening to them and talking with them and getting their perspective, it does make my heart just swell with pride that the students are willing to take the chance to get out there and speak their mind in helpful ways. The protests are peaceful here in St. Lucie County, and I am so grateful for that because the message is heard when it's delivered in a forum such as that. We've got some really great young leaders in our community now that our community's in good hands as the future comes about. We have done, we've done well with educating our students and letting them know what's right and what's wrong, and to be proud and to stand up for what is right. Now, I have a little, my granddaughter's going to be entering kindergarten in the fall. And just listening to her perspective really takes me down so many notches because there's such wisdom in what these children have to say and how they don't see the differences, but they see togetherness and they see love. And it just speaks from their heart all the time. So I aspire, as I know each of us on this board aspire, to be more like that every single day as we lead this school district. And it is, I'm very proud to sit up here, to be among this board, to lead forth. And Mr. Ingersoll, I suspect that of our remaining school board years, there probably will be more with change than are come. But I think that's the expectation and the realization as our world evolves. We will always have things that we need to stand up and we need to fight for, and we need to do that with our students and our team in mind. So thank you to all of you for everything you do every day. You know, when I look out in this room, so many of you, it's not just what you do for the school district. It's what you do for your community and for the youth of the community. And we are indeed blessed to have such a wonderful team and all those that serve in our schools and our students. We just, again, encourage you to keep fighting for what's right, and we'll get there. I know we will. We have no unscheduled speakers that I'm aware of, so we are adjourned.